3:00, I'd like to call this meeting the meeting of the Lemmister School Committee. It is Monday, November 20th. We're at Appleseed's Restaurant. Would you all stand? Oh, we're gonna wait for the pledge of allegiance?
No, literally wait?
Yeah, we can wait.
We had a kindergartner coming who's supposed to lead us, so we're trying to give him just a few minutes to get here. So maybe we can move on to, um, do we have to do the public forum?
Sure, we could do the public comment period. Would anyone like to address the school committee? If so?
I think you have a couple of people's names.
We do. Stephanie Boragad is the first speaker. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephanie Boragad, 121 Silven Ave. I'm here once again to bring the attention to the problems with lack of teachers in the electrical program at CTEI. Because of the budget cuts, the electrical program is down to one teacher. The loss of this teacher has caused major issues within the program. Like I spoke about in the last school committee meeting, the electrical program is the only trade that is unable to leave the school to gain real-world experience. Remember, the city receives the electrical work and all the work each trade does in CTE for free. These students will not get the experience needed for when they go out on their co-op jobs. This is an important part of their electrical education program. I also found out recently that the juniors and seniors of electrical are now missing one whole period of their trade because there is not enough electrical teachers. These students are now being sent to a classroom for one period to sit and wait. No class, just wait and play on their phones until the next period. These issues that continue to be ignored are affecting the students and the teachers of this program, and it is definitely affecting morale. This is completely unacceptable. I again respectfully request that the situation be addressed immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next is Chris Devani.
Chris Devani, 85 Eugene Street, Lemmister. Following up on what Stephanie had said, my concern this evening surrounds the electrical program and the lack of adequate staffing in that vocational track. I have a son who is a sophomore in the program. I implore this committee, the superintendent, other members of the administration to thoroughly review the situation and look for avenues to rectify the staffing circumstance that currently exists. Because, one, lack of adequate teachers in the program directly impacts the number of students that can be exposed to the trade. Lack of adequate staffing will lead to our students not being as thoroughly prepared as their counterparts from other vocational schools. And finally, as Stephanie says, my understanding that the current lack of adequate staffing has resulted in some of our upperclassmen sitting through an extraneous first-period session where they would normally be getting valuable field experience or other instruction. If this is true, it's completely unfair to our students. Very quickly, the 2017 Construction Outlook Survey conducted by the Associated General Contractors of America shows that 73% of firms are planning to hire more workers. The survey also shows that 73% of firms are having a hard time filling those positions, and 75% of those same firms expect it to remain hard to become, or become harder to find qualified construction professionals to fill their vacancies. As the baby boomers retire from the trades, we do not have enough skilled candidates coming up behind them, which is a curse for the industry but a blessing for our CTEI students. If our CTEI students are well-educated and trained, then there should be plenty of opportunities for them to pursue. However, it is essential that they get the fundamental training in their high school career to hit the ground running. I respectfully request that you put your collective expertise together to find the appropriate resolution to the shortfall that our electrical program students are currently experiencing. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Claire Frida.
Claire Frida, 117 Debbie Drive. I'm actually here on a positive note. I just wanted to comment on, you know, the success of the custodians, the contract negotiations that hopefully are all set. But I just wanted to note that many people in the community are very satisfied, very happy with that position. Yesterday, we had our Breakfast of the Bands, the 23rd year. It was incredibly successful. The custodian staff was great as usual. The schools are really clean and in good shape. So I just wanted to report that because enough steds on the other side, it's good to be on the positive side. And I also want to commend the committee on Paula Deacon. I've known Paula a long time. I've watched her for a long time, and I think the healing process is already beginning. So congratulations. And she was in line yesterday, like the superintendents prior to her serving food. When her time was up, she decided to stay overtime and work the whole morning. So I'm gonna thank her for that. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. And the last speaker is David Fiendaka.
David Fiendaka, 467 Litchfield Street, Lemmister, Mass. And I'm just here to support the first two speakers that came to the podium tonight to talk about the third electrical instructor. I would just like to explain that our electrical program each year has the highest rate of students going out on co-op opportunities, and that's usually between 60 and 80% of our seniors being placed in co-op. As we recognize this, we retrofitted the freshman-sophomore shop to allow us to take 16 students into the program. We did that because we used to have two teachers teaching the juniors and seniors, and we could split the crew in half and have eight students go with one teacher and eight students go with the other teacher, which worked out very well. This year, we ran into troubles with that because of the budget situation that we ran into, and now we have 16 teachers, 16 students in our junior class and one teacher. So it makes it very difficult, if not impossible, to go out on a job site to do any work with 16 students and only one teacher. So I would ask you that you please consider this in your deliberations. We could desperately use another electrical instructor, and we make many contributions to the school department with the work that the students do for the school department while they're learning the basics of their trade. So thank you for your consideration.
Mayor, could I ask Dave one question about this?
Well, I'd rather we ask the superintendent once we get into the new and old business, partially.
Okay.
And we can always recess then.
Well, a question about hours.
Right. I think, are you pretty up to speed on the situation?
I am.
Okay. So we'll take it up a little later. All right. And do we have student report? I say that was an asset at the end, students' reports or student reports?
All right, so I'm Tori Hashi. I'm a senior at LHS. I'm the vice president of Student Council. I'm also involved in National Art Society, GIVE, which is a volunteer experiences club, CAP, which is an academic achievement club and as well as student government.
I'm a Burkhart. I'm a senior also, and I'm president of Student Council, and I'm also in NHS, GIVE, CAP.
Okay, so this week, we did our canned food drive, but we actually finished it up last week. And so on Thursday, we counted all the cans, and it's a secret right now for the total. I figured that out on Thanksgiving. So hopefully, we'll come in closer with Fitchburg this year, fingers crossed. But we had a really good show out, and a lot of food was raised, and we brought that all to Roost Food Pantry after and helped them to organize it and set up for their Thanksgiving Day event, where they helped families in the community to like have a Thanksgiving meal instead of having to go to a shelter. So that worked out really well, and all the motivation behind it was also helped out to get it really high numbers this year.
Tomorrow, we have the Powderpuff game at Doyle Field. So it's the flag football game between the junior girls and senior girls, and the money of the tickets goes towards the yearbook.
And then also tomorrow, we have our pep rally, which is obviously exciting, especially for seniors, seeing as it's a tradition. And we also have senior breakfast, which is just really nice for the grades to bond and kind of have that senior time together. It's also a fundraiser for the class, which is great. So the rally is just, we kind of celebrate the seniors for cheering and football, and we do some goofy skits and stuff for them, just to get everyone excited for Thanksgiving to beat the rival, Fitchburg.
The Thanksgiving game's obviously Thursday, and it's at Crocker Field this year at 10:00. So we're hoping for a win this year.
And then also, I said before, we had the Breakfast of the Bands this weekend, which was a great turnout, and everyone really enjoyed it. Teachers were talking about it a lot, and they all had a great time at it.
We have the peer-initiated tutoring, so it's every Tuesdays and Thursdays in the media center where if people need help with like their homework or like test reviews, they can go to the media center, and there's usually, there's other students who can help you. Usually, it's like seniors or students in AP classes that will just help and like, it's just for, to just do better.
And this year, they started doing like test review sessions, so they can send in, like from a teacher could send in a study guide if they wanted students to go to that. And teachers will utilize it too, so if you want to like make up a test, they would say, okay, you have to like a parent's signature, and you have to go to like a peer-initiated tutoring session in order to do that. So it's really good, and it's good to have that student-on-student, instead of just the teacher teaching to get a different perspective on that. And then also, we have parent teacher conferences going on today and tomorrow, which we heard are going really good. The teachers said that it's all good things this year.
I know last time, we talked about the MCAS makeups, and we finished those as of last week, and they went smoothly, so.
And then winter sports tryouts are starting next week, so we'll have girls and boys basketball, hockey, and all the other winter sports. We have a pretty good amount. So that's just gonna start up. They'll be after school. They had the winter sports meeting, which is just to go over all the rules and stuff.
Student Council does like a Faculty of the Month, so we can honor any faculty member. And we get input from students of like all classes, like CTE and like the other classes and special ed. And this Faculty of the Month for October was Mr. Nobby Yellow, so we'd like to congratulate him on that. He got very good responses from his students.
And then also, we just wanted to add that the response from students to the Janers being back has been very positive. Everyone's really excited to see them back because a lot of students did have like pretty good relationships with them, so we're very excited and thankful for that. That's all we have for this week.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we can do our Pledge of Allegiance now. We have our pledge.
We have eight allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for riches and one nation under God and the visible for liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Awesome. Good job. Good job.
Okay.
Read our statement.
We have our communication from the superintendent. Do we have any communications?
Do you want to just read our statement?
Oh, I'm sorry. "The committee represents the needs of all Lemmister public school students and places their interest above all others. We will exercise leadership adhered to our protocols and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We'll advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmister." So superintendent, do we have any communications? We have one from the city council.
We do. Just one from the city council. They're requesting a meeting between the school committee and the city council. We need to schedule that as soon as possible.
So one of the things, the purpose is, of course, is around the budget, and one of the things we were holding off in meeting was because we did not have sort of a line item budget yet, so I guess I would want to know from the finance committee, how close are we?
We have a vote on that tonight.
Excellent.
So you feel comfortable at that point? Okay.
I think so.
Good.
I guess I defer that to Glenn, if he wants to wait for any reason. Nope. And I just want to speak for him, since he'll be the one in the hot seat, pretty much.
Okay.
And I guess just in the very beginning, to welcome Paula. As our superintendent, we appreciate it. This is your first meeting, so welcome aboard.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you. I also, I'd like to acknowledge tonight, we have our new school committee members here in attendance. We have Michael Stassen in the front, and we have Isabel Alario over there, and we are anxious to get working. Great job.
And you have any reports?
I do, just a few. So first, this evening, families are engaging in parent-teacher conferences throughout the district. That will be happening tonight and all day tomorrow. Families have received either a report card and/or progress reports, which denote individual achievement profiles. I also want to state that on November 7th, the entire district participated in a full day of professional development focused on data. Our district PD committee was able to organize and plan meaningful agendas with appropriate protocols for engagement. Plans were created in an effort to best support our learners as we move forward, enhancing student achievement. On Sunday, I participated in the Breakfast of the Bands. Fantastic. With much support and many, many hands, many hands, we were able to serve well over 1,000 meals and enjoy the entertainment provided by both Fitchburg and Lemmister bands. I will be attending several more events this week, such as the Football Bank with the annual game, as well as several turkey dinner invites from various schools. So if anybody would like to start eating turkey tomorrow at 9:00, please join me. So there will be no snacking tonight. Also, just to make note, many of the principals have been updating their calendars, and there are so many events coming up, and they have asked that the community come and participate. If there's anything else that you need to know about, just ask, but there are many things going on. And lastly, I would like to honor two Lemmister High students with a superintendent certificate of excellence. Both Abigail Arena, grade nine, and Emily Herr, grade 10, received prestigious awards at the city's Veterans Day ceremony on November 11th for their outstanding essays. Abigail received the VFW Voice of Democracy Award along with a $300 scholarship. And Emily was awarded the AMVETS American Essay Award and has traveled to an all-expense-paid trip to Valley Forge, Pennsylvania, as well as $100 for spending money. This writing was supported by their teacher, Mr. Barnaby, and has set these students as role models for their colleagues. I wish to allow them the opportunity to read their essays to this committee. So if Abigail could come forward, and Emily? Thank you.
When asked about the future, many ideas and images come to mind. One may think of new technology, or scenes out of a dystopian novel, or ideals of world peace and global unity. Some people yearn for the years and the decades to come, looking ahead with hope for new beginnings. Others fear what coming centuries may hold, dreading the possibility that the world will finally shatter beyond repair. And still, others prefer not to occupy any space in their minds with what has yet to come. Perhaps they are afraid, or perhaps despite the fact that there is much to improve, they are simply content with the way things are now. I believe that what the future holds varies between individuals, depending on how they look at both the past and the present. And further, I believe that my hopes for the future of myself, my peers, and my country are reflected in the people around me. Some people regard the past as something that has gone by, something that is no longer relevant as we push forward. However, this could not be farther from the truth, because in the eyes of many, the past can be compared to the likes of a very important book, a book that holds sacred information from which we can all learn and build off of. In the case of our country, the past has played a vital role in shaping our hopes, dreams, and goals for the future. As a country founded on the principles of freedom, integrity, and the rights of the people, America has been molded by generations of courageous men and women who fought and sacrificed so much, not only to preserve our nation's principles, but to paint a picture of hope for its coming years. As humans, it's a given that we all have desires for our own personal futures. There are colleges we want to attend and jobs we want to work, but the way I see it, it is through our own unique goals that we will accomplish what we hope for as a whole nation. And as citizens of this nation, we hope that one day, everyone will feel as though they have a voice, that everyone will be able to feel safe, empowered, and truly free in their lives as individuals and as Americans. Past generations provided the outline for the present, and now it is up to my own generation, as well as those to come, to draw the plans for the future. In this way, the young people of America can be thought of as the very embodiment of our country's aspirations, as they will be the ones to soon go out and transform our hopes into realities. It could be that in your own town, even in your own home, sits the child who will grow up and devise a method establishing peace among people from all walks of life. Classrooms or entire schools could be full of future scientists, diplomats, and philanthropists who will one day cure diseases or stop violence in the streets, or end the suffering of the impoverished. Whatever any given child may become, it is always possible that they will hold the key to improving the lives of the people around them and the quality of our already proud nation. At the end of the day, I believe that regardless of your background, beliefs, or experiences, we all share several common hopes for our country and ourselves. We hope for happiness, equality, and success, and to continue the tradition of freedom that has been defended for years, all in order to live prosperous lives as Americans.
Good job.
Voting is significant and very important to the world. Its purpose is to express your opinion on a certain debate, and there are many reasons to why voting is very important. It plays a very important part in our government and in our lives every single day. For example, voting is a privilege, but for many countries, they do not have the freedom to do so. It should be an honor for us, and we should not misuse it. Our past Americans have struggled to achieve the greatness of freedom such as voting, speech, and religion. To this day, our veterans have worked their hardest to keep our freedoms. They work at their best to make sure that no one would change it, and they would go through many hardships to protect it. There are still many people fighting for it, and there are many people who are missing who fought for it. Voting is your voice in the government, and it is an opportunity that allows you to influence the government. Elections are for the people to engage in the government. A single vote can impact greatly, and many can lead to changes in our community, states, nation, and even the whole world. No matter who you are, your vote counts. Your vote helps determine who leads us and represents us as a whole country. Our government is based on voting, such as we vote on our presidents, mayors, and governors. We choose everyone and everything by voting. There are many more things to achieve on the ballot other than the president. Voting can help support issues that need to be solved, such as drug laws, marriage laws, and many more. You can also change how much the minimum wage is. In statistics of the 2016 election, about only 58% of the people voted, while only 42 did not. It may have beaten the 2012 percentage of voting, but it still shows that many people do not vote. Many thought that their vote would not affect the election, but their vote would have, and it could change the election. Voting is a true method that makes our country lead to the greater good. Voting is a privilege, not something to think little of. Voting creates a statement for the people and expresses the thoughts of many.
Thank you.
Good job. And they both got a standing ovation at City Hall in front of all the veterans. And then Paula, if you want, we can sort of address the issue. I thought we were funded for at least two in the CTEI. I thought we were funded for at least two in all of the trades. Is there somebody missing, or?
Those who just stepped forward and were able to come in tonight.
No, for the funding for the trades, I thought that when we ended up passing the budget, that there were two in each of the trades.
The electrical? Yes, there are two. One is out for a reason, or got another job, but we have funding for two.
Oh, okay.
I think we're looking for additional.
So we're advertising?
We're not advertising.
No, we have to make it.
We have to make it. We have an open, we have an open position.
Right, so we have to advertise to fill the position.
Isn't it open right now? So do you know for electrical?
We don't have anything posted.
We don't have anything posted. Go ahead.
I think what we need to do is, I think we need to have a motion to find the money, possibly through what we've been saving on unemployment, to be able to have that third teacher come back in, so these kids can go out and...
All right, but there's two, there's two per trade, correct?
I think there's some, I think there's some that have three per trade.
But the electrical's two, correct?
Right.
You need three to go out.
But there's at least two in the trade. Okay. All right. And so...
But you said somebody is out, so is there really only one teacher? Is Dave still here?
There's three in the electrical. There's now only two.
There's only two.
I thought I heard one tonight, that there's only one in...
No, there's short one.
There's short one, yes.
Dave's right here. He can clarify the soup.
We have two electrical instructors.
Two, okay.
We just didn't have three.
Gotcha. That's what I thought.
So there's short one.
That's where the one came in, they were short one.
Mayor, my concern and what I wanted to ask Dave to clarify is by these, because it's not just, it's not just the juniors that are having to go sit a period. It's also the opposite week, when the seniors have their shop, they have to go sit a week while the juniors are in related.
I get it.
Yeah. But because of that issue, are they losing hours to go towards their CTEI certificate that they will get in the, when they get their diploma? Which then will hamper them getting, going out and seeking a job.
Okay. So maybe on the finance piece of this tonight, we're gonna get to that real shortly. In fact, we'll get to it as soon as we do the minutes, and we'll get to the finance piece of it. And then you can sort of update us as to where we're at, because I'm afraid that, I mean, first of all, these recommendations should be coming from the superintendent and recommending to us if there are transfers somewhere in the budget, if there's money to be transferred, and this is the highest of the superintendent's priorities, then this is the way we ought to address it. Because otherwise, we're just gonna do, this is what got us in trouble last time. We're just doing them and always keeping track of how much we're spending. Yes?
But I'm just curious, though, because it's not a finance piece. No one raised the question about the hours needed for the certificate. Can we get clarification on that piece, at least? That's not a finance piece, just the number of hours needed?
Is that...
David, why don't we clear it up, please?
In two particular trades, the electrical trade and the plumbing trade, we have to keep track of the amount of hours that students work in their, in their trades. Those hours count toward their apprenticeship hours as they go for their journeyman's and eventual master licensure. So it is correct, right now, for one period a day, they're not getting any electrical training while they're in that classroom situation. So they're losing an hour a day when they are in their shop situation.
Will they have enough hours for their certificate? I mean, is this gonna...
No, they'll still get their certificate, and everybody that graduates gets a certificate, and on the certificate, we will indicate how many hours they have earned while passing through their trade.
So that this year's seniors will have less hours than last year's?
Yes, some of them, yes.
But the real concern is getting them out into the community like they used, they used to go, right?
Right.
All right. Okay, we'll get back to you with an answer, and I think that's the best that we can do tonight.
And I guess my question is, clearly, you're advocating for a full-time position, but is it something that a part-time position could fulfill the duties, or?
You know, I want to say, whatever we can get, we'll be happy with, and I mean that, but ideally, a full-time position would be good, because if we have a part-time position, we have half the problem solved. Because the students that are in the junior and senior shops are in the, those junior and senior shops for the whole school day. So if we can put them out on the job site by having an extra teacher, that solves the problem. But if we only have the teacher for a half a day, then we're back to square one for the rest of the day.
Okay. I just wanted to, I'm not surprised by your answer, but I needed to ask.
Okay. Well, it's the truth, I think.
So Dave, what about the revenue from our school choice CTEI students? Has that revenue been earmarked in your regular budget, or is that something we can look at using to fill the position?
Well, I think I'm not qualified to answer that question. I know we have brought extra revenue in. How that revenue is used, I...
Because we haven't talked about the revenue on that side, so in my mind, it's not earmarked for anything. And you're generating the income bringing those students in from West Boylston, so I would ask the superintendent maybe to look into that money, those funds, right? Because how many students we have?
We have four students from West Boylston.
Close 15,000 a year, or 12?
It's, it's close to 11, close to 11, not quite. It's 10 and some change.
And this teacher, this missing teacher thing, is it impacting them? The kids from West Boylston?
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
Anybody who's in electrical.
No, it really, it really isn't impacting them.
It's not impacting them yet.
No, because they're ninth graders, and this teacher will be teaching juniors and seniors.
It will impact them a lot.
I just had to ask.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll get back to you with some answers.
Okay.
And we'll send it out. We have everyone that spoke tonight. Chris, I'll give you back this list here, and we'll get back to everybody with an answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Are you ready to do reports?
Yep.
Okay.
Wendy has the policy report.
Well, do you want to...
These are the presentations for the committee.
Oh, for the MCAS, I didn't look.
Any highlights from the meeting?
Do, did you bring your brochure with you? Can you pass it down? Why don't you start, because I left my notes at home.
Right ahead, please. I got my, the...
Yeah, so why don't you start, and then I'll refresh my memory.
Well, on that handout that I'm giving to Eileen, there was four days, there was sixty-four presentations, and I've got here, I've got twenty-four of them, I believe it's twenty-four, I wrote them down, a number over here. And I also asked Chris to put them on, on the web. Correct, Chris? Or put them on the, on the web? Yeah, because I really do want everyone to look at these PowerPoints. The biggest one, the biggest one, there was one by, well, I went to the delegate assembly, and all the resolutions got passed. Resolution number one, there was some wording change, and there was some arguments by some people, but it got passed. The, the biggest, the biggest PowerPoint presentation, Eileen will tell you, I'll let her talk about it, the one with Bill Daggett, Educating for the Future presentation. And I asked the guy to give us an audio also, and I'm still waiting for that. The biggest, there was, there was, there was four, there was five that I attended in one day. The, there was one, I counted the minutes it would take me to go from one place to the other, because I really wanted to make sure I had a seat. Come to find out, only ten people were there, with visa status, residency, and immigration issues. And the thing with Puerto Rico that just started happening, the kids from Puerto Rico coming here, and how it's impacting all the schools. Holyoke in Worcester has been overrun by, by students coming from Puerto Rico, and it's going to impact their, their monies. The worst, the big thing for the immigration, or the, or the, the immigration, I wonder who are, what's the word, looking for, because I lost my words. But they came here with their parents, and they're not, they're not American citizens. That really impacts their, their classes. They're very much worried whether they're going to be able to graduate, and they're, they're really afraid of, of the INS coming to their houses. But the worst part about it is, there was only fifteen people there. I would have thought the place would have been cheeked by Jaws. But I have the PowerPoint presentations here. The other thing was one on OPEB, also on STEM, and the other, the other classes that I attended, there was fourteen I attended. And as I said, I have the PowerPoint presentations here. If you, if you don't want to look it on the website, all you have to do is either email me or call me, and I'll send it to you, the whole PowerPoint presentation, you can look whatever you want. There's, 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 there's a couple that I really want people to look at. It's about the drug use, and, I'm going to draw my fingers. The opioid crisis, and the company in the school programs, and that Friday general session, John Kelly talked about addiction, opioids, and cannabis. And they're really, he, he didn't make it pretty at all. He really, I just wish I could get the audio on that, too. It was very, he had a lot of information, some stuff you just can't, you know, you have a hard time digesting. But that's where I, that's where I finish, and I'll let, I'll let Eileen finish.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So I think, you know, in general, the theme of this year's conference was really talking about supporting sort of social, emotional learning through a variety of venues. So not only academic, you know, sort of standardized tests, but really sort of an individual sort of plan for every child. They talked about the use of giving every child a laptop or a Chromebook, and being able to sort of have access twenty-four seven to stuff online for the kids to enhance their learning when they're home. They talked about measuring not just sort of the academics, but more social situations for students to help them sort of be more well-rounded. Mental health issues were pretty prominent in the discussion in a lot of the different workshops, and really sort of noting that, you know, kids that come from more stressed home lives, and financial situations, and emotional situations, you know, have a much more difficult time learning, and how we need to really be considering, you know, other kinds of supports for them. I think, you know, in general, the schools are sort of in charge of doing more and more for children, not just sort of many years ago, it was just the three Rs, and now it really has expanded to really talking about sort of the whole child, which was sort of a more build-on from last year's theme. They, you know, there was a lot of discussion around, you know, sort of the opiate crisis, and how, like you said, the drugs really are sort of prevalent throughout all walks of society, and how that's really impacting family life, and, you know, certainly student achievement in a variety of ways. So that was also a big, big issue. I went to an MIAA one as well, and there is a lot of opportunities for student athletes to be involved through leadership programs, so hopefully, we're taking advantage of that. There's scholarship opportunities. There was some time spoken about the female golfer from our, from Lunenburg. And as an aside, that wasn't part of the presentation, but there was some, a school community member from that school, and she has made out like a bandit with scholarships and other kinds of opportunities that she probably never would have had. So in the end, she got a lot of publicity, that paid off, so good for her. So, you know, overall, I think it was, you know, a well-received conference, and, you know, very enlightening. I think a lot of the venue vendors during the, sort of the open sessions really were building folks, which we were not, you know, obviously...
There wasn't as many vendors as last year.
No, and then most of them were architectural firms and those kinds of things, which were not in the...
They didn't have as many books, they weren't selling as many books they had last year, the year before.
Yeah, so it wasn't quite as relevant for us, because we're not in the process of building anything, since we've completed our projects.
Well, once they change the formula for schools, I think a lot of people are going to be explaining how to fund their schools, because they're only limiting to per-square-foot car, so...
Right, so that's been difficult. So, you know, that piece was a little different, I think, than previous times, so, good conference.
What did they talk about on the OPEB, the other, or post the point of benefits?
Well, I, I sent you, on this paper that's here, there's an OPEB thing, and...
What's that?
It's in your packet.
No, I just want to hear what you got from it. So you went to the class, so...
The OPEB, they, you know, they went over everything. They were saying that generally, all the, all the districts, they have to start filling it, and once you start putting money in, as someone else said last year or the year before, that's irrevocable, you can't take the money back. But the trick pony in all this is that you don't have to put a whole bundle every year, you can put just a small amount, and it works just as well. Because they're not so much concerned as filling it completely, but as long as you keep putting stuff in there, that's the big, that's the big... And I, and I, and I'm telling you, I grilled, I must have grilled those guys fifteen times, three ways till Christmas. They got really upset with me, because I kept on asking them the same question, and I wanted to make sure I understood what they were saying. And, you know, they, they said to me, what the, what the heck's wrong with you? Don't you understand English? Yes, I understand, I understand very well. But I want to make sure I'm hearing what I'm hearing.
And what do we budget for our OPEB? What do we have in our budget? Zero?
As I understand, it's the regional school districts that have to worry about OPEB, because they're financed by multiple municipalities. I don't think it's a responsibility or legitimate net school spending for municipal school districts such as ours. As Mayor has mentioned many times, that's one of the areas that the city is doing a terrific job, is funding OPEB entirely out of the city budget. That's not a school department expense at this time.
We're there, I mean, we're almost there. It's, it's, what's going to happen is, there are more retired people right now than there are people working in the system, and that's just going to grow as baby boomers work their way out of the system. And if you're not setting that money aside, you're going to actually end up with a generation of people that you don't have money to pay their benefits. And you're going to still have to pay, it's just your taxes are going to go through the roof, because that's where they're going to come from. But that is the big disagreement that we had, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we've been putting money into that fund right along, and it doesn't come towards net school spending. So, but we're funding it, and it's going to save us millions, tens of millions by funding it properly. The other school systems aren't putting any money, they're just kicking the can down the road so far that, you know, they're just, they're going to be in trouble. That's just pensions, that doesn't include retirement, which teachers have a separate retirement system, the city has a separate budget. Okay, thanks, Ron.
Move right along.
Yes, questions?
Chris, this is on the MASCE website, we all got an email Friday, so they have the handouts online?
Right, but you have to understand, and I've been pestering them, I believe there's only, there's only twenty-seven of them, and I know there's more, and there's also the audio, and I've been, I've been begging them, I want, especially the one with the Bill Daggett one?
Yeah.
Because if you guys are looking at your laptops or your, you'll see the one with Bill, Bill Daggett. He showed one particular area that changed, it was in South Korea, right? Where he went there one year, then the following year, he went to the same place, and it changed dramatically. It was as different as night and day. And he says, that's what's happening worldwide. Nobody's able to keep up. And he talked about the four revolutions, and, do you remember?
Yep.
And we're in the middle of the, of the fourth one. And it's also deep learning. None of us, none of us are ready for deep learning, because it's going to, it requires that we almost have to give up everything we've already learned. And, and then I'm going to shut up. The worst thing is that he was telling us that one of the advantages to a lot of people that are out there, you know, they may not have had the schooling that we have here, but because they don't have that baggage, they're more susceptible to using things that all of a sudden have been invented. The best example I can give you, and I have, have a bias in this, in the medical field, where you have somebody who has their BSN in nursing, and then they go and get their masters, or whatever have you, but there are some people that get their BSN in another field, and then they bridge over to nursing. It's quicker, and they don't have the baggage that they inherited by going to nursing school. And that's what you're seeing with a lot of other professions.
Transferable skills, right? Good learning. Okay, Ron, thank you. Eileen, thank you.
So for the superintendent's search process?
Yes.
I had talked to Glenn Kucher while I was at the conference, and he was feeling, much like I think he's expressed maybe to some other people, that at this point, we're probably not in a position to actively search. We certainly have the opportunity to employ, you know, a company that will assist us to search. In the past, we've always chosen MASCE, and there's private companies that have approached us, but what Glenn was feeling is that at this point, we sort of are too late to the game for, for next year, and given our instability recently, that we're not going to attract a lot of qualified candidates right off the bat, and that we should sort of let the dust settle and let Paula sort of heal us single-handedly. No, no pressure?
No pressure.
No pressure? And then, you know, make a decision, you know, sort of how we want to proceed at a later date, and I am, you know, being a little facetious, because it's not obviously all policy responsibility, but to then later, you know, make a decision about whether we want to then go out. But he was feeling it would be sort of a waste of money for us to do so at this point in time, given the time and sort of the nature of where our school district is at this point.
Do these other companies feel the same way?
So I have not talked to anybody else except for him. Obviously, he knows us well. Other, other companies, of course, are wanting to make a profit, so...
You know, my problem with the other companies in general, if, they're, they're much more expensive than using MASCE, and I think Glenn does a fine job. There's no active recruiting. You know, they all say, oh, hands off, we can't do that, there's no poaching. So it's still the same advertising process, which I think at this point, you know, with the internet and with the same sites that everyone uses, I'm not sure that we'd really be getting more for our money unless someone was going to go target someone for us, and, you know, really try to solicit someone that we thought was a similar district and all those things. You know, it's a difference, at least last time, was between ten and forty thousand dollars.
But in fairness to the, I mean, Glenn's going to, they're going to charge us?
About ten thousand.
I think it was ten.
It was ten.
So in fairness to the process of procurement, we should...
Yes.
Just as a matter of process, encourage companies to come forward and listen to what they have to say, hopefully before the end of the fiscal year, at the end of the calendar year, just to hear what they have to say about what...
I think kicking off a search in September is what you want to do, by starting with the, you know, community forum, so you might want to interview, do the procurement part in the spring, summer. But just make sure that somebody asks, you know, will you go recruit for us? Just to know what the difference is, because the passive search is...
I feel we're not doing our due diligence by not at least inviting them in and hearing what they have to say about...
Right.
How they might do it differently.
And we've done that before, you know, and, you know, certainly financial constraints, but you also want people who know sort of Leavenster and what our needs are, as well as, you know, sort of what the state of Massachusetts. So some companies coming from, you know, Nebraska are not going to be relevant.
Hear them out, hear them out, right?
Eileen, what was Glenn's feeling on, when should we be starting a process? In September, or in the springtime?
Well, I mean, he was sort of talking about, like, a year and a half. He was feeling like we needed a longer...
We had to wait a year and a half before we started?
Yeah, that's, he was feeling like we needed to let the dust settle. And we certainly can revisit it, because he said he, you know, we could do whatever we want, but that was what his thoughts were, that at this point, a lot of the qualified candidates have already been scooped up, and given sort of our fluctuating state of affairs, that we may want to be on firmer ground, because we're not as an attractive commodity as maybe we were at other points in our history. If I'm putting that delicately.
I'd still feel comfortable if we talked to one of those other companies and just get that same feeling from them, that, what is it, what's the other company?
NetApp.
Yeah, and there was somebody...
For them to say the same sort of thing. What's that?
It was NetApp, and then independent.
And then independent.
And they charged about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
And MASCE was ten.
Ten.
I think one of the private companies committed forty, because I talked to them, I talked to them on the phone.
But I was saying, just to get their feedback in terms of if they feel it's too late to go for a search.
Right, well, certainly it's too late now, but I think in the spring, we can interview people or talk to people.
I'd like to talk to them to make sure, to validate that they have the same feeling as Glenn, that we're too late in the process. I'd just like to validate, so that we've done our own due diligence.
Okay.
Yes.
So how much is that going to cost us?
A phone call.
Yeah, the cost is just to add, just to get their opinion.
They think that we're too late into starting the process, that's it. If they don't...
Because they don't want to do a search if they're not going to be successful either, so they'd just say, you know, we, you missed the cycle, wait six months, something like that.
I mean, every school system's going to wait now, a year and a half?
Well, usually, usually...
Well, not a year and a half.
Not a year and a half, but usually, it's like September.
I mean, we've done this a couple of times, I guess, you want to extend your offers in January, February.
Right.
I'm just saying, I, nobody's, nobody's going to start any process at all from here going forward.
Depends on who you want to get.
Right.
That's why I want to hear from, from the other company.
You might get some qualified...
I just want to validate that that fact is the case, and they feel the same way.
So is Eileen going, Eileen, are you going to?
Unless you want me to call, but you're welcome to call.
Doesn't matter.
If you can call, that'd be great. Okay. We'll move now on to minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty seventeen meeting, and the October thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Wait, can we go back, so who's going to be, who, should we appoint someone to be in, like Donna Danino was in charge of the search process before, should you appoint someone at this point, or vote on someone to...
They might even, I mean, if that's...
Who's going to make the...
Right, and we may not need to, and you never have.
We might not have to at this point.
I don't know if Eileen has the time to put into, I mean, it's a time consuming...
No, just that one phone call.
I'm going to make the one phone call, and then we'll see what they say, and then we can make a decision.
But she's...
I would just like the record to reflect that we called at least another company, and they feel the same way, and then I'd feel comfortable we did our job. We have minutes? Everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the October 16th and the October 30th meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, areas of emissions? If not, all in favor, signify the usual manner. Those opposed? Thank you. Finance Subcommittee?
Okay. So, in your packet, in the back two pages?
Yes.
Is our line item budget. So, what I'm looking for tonight is a vote from the committee. Finance voted the other night unanimously. This isn't a vote, you know, about what our total number is. This is more to agree that this is how we want the line items expended. I don't think technically we even need to do this vote, because once you've gone on salary and expenses, it's just done. But in order to have buy-in from the committee, we need to start making transfers out of unemployment, move the custodian lines around, things like that. You wanna have a good starting point. And under Glenn's great advice, this is what we came up with to the best of our ability. And I'd like to say, this is the first time in three years that I feel comfortable with a line item budget. It might not be perfect, perfect, right? Because we had some problems, but thank you very much, because this is so much more than we've received in such a long time. So, thank you. The one thing that we don't have yet, because we're still putting the pieces together that I'd like to show you, is, and Sue sent the comparison, I think it's a copy here, of the, this is just what's in munis for our general fund for 16, 17, and then the 18 proposes what we're voting on. And it shows you how the numbers have gone up or down, there's a percent change. What I'd like to be able to show you in the next month, I think we have a meeting December 11th. It's this, plus it's what we spend out of revolving, which is millions of dollars, which really does affect our budget. It's also what includes the city withholdings and all the pieces that really make our budget our budget. This is just one, it's a big piece of it, but it's just one piece of it. So, this you can use as reference, but hopefully in the next month, we're gonna come forward with more detail so you can see, you know, how we use the circuit breaker and school choice and the athletic revolving and all those things that really completes it. So, does anyone have any questions?
I, I did. And going through my notes from the last time we were talking about sped, when we, I, the finance team, whoever, transferred the funds, we made four different transfers last fiscal year or during the budget process. And one of the transfers that I made was the fund sped at a higher.
This is for 18 or 17?
This would be for 18.
Okay.
There should have been an increase of $500,000 or $800,000 in the sped over last year's budget. There should have been an increase.
Okay, so.
And that doesn't count the circuit breaker, just, just the increase.
Right.
When you compare last year's and this year's, one of the areas that we, when I transferred the funds to get these back to where they needed to be, the issue of sped came up. And I didn't hear that coming from the conversation last meeting.
Yep, if I'm trying to find my line.
It's the last one, $9,300, $9,400.
Is it $9,300?
Oh, so, yep, thank you.
On the expense side, it did go up $880,000.
Right, that's what I thought.
From actual of 2017 to budget of 2018. Those two.
Does that include the circuit breaker?
No.
No, circuit breaker is a different number.
And we're still getting, though, we're still getting those numbers.
Do you know about how much that is?
I'd say anywhere between $900 and $1,004,000.
It's that much?
And that's, and that's what we've had, though. I mean, that's not.
That's if we get the same amount as we do.
Yeah, and then it depends on, the reimbursement rate goes from 65 to 72. But, but the last meeting, I, I knew I had seen a much larger number when we talked about the increase in sped.
Right.
With Ned, and so, the fortunately, unfortunately part is sped did get, when you totaled the three lines, you know, more than $1,000,000 more than last year.
Seventeen versus 18.
Yeah.
And that is the reason why we put, we transferred these funds over to the school funds. And I didn't hear that coming from last.
No, no, no. What's hard, though, is that most of that money is not money that we're able to allocate to the schools. These are tuitions to out-of-district programs that if we have, you know, three students move in, or, you know, whatever, make sure we're budgeting correctly.
It's an increase.
Yeah, it negatively affects other lines for sure, because those lines went up. But, you know, we have to fund, we have to do our job, but.
And then the circuit breaker, did we reserve any of those funds or anything at this particular point? I think we left it blank.
So, last year, we tried to reserve $100,000. This year, you know, depending on how much we get, I guess we'll, we'll determine how much we spend out of circuit breaker, and then if there's anything left over in this line here. And that's the last piece of, you know, when I mentioned the budget, you know, really comparing this just being one piece, is we're gonna get those revolving funds and get the balances and get the anticipated in and out better, to be able to have a better discussion about it.
Okay. Thank you for the question. I, I could've sworn we had this conversation, and after the last meeting, I wasn't sure if we were all on the same page.
Wendy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm getting this, because there's no denying that the number from 17 to 18 went up. But if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is that this has nothing to do with the positions needed in our buildings, because these are for, like, out-of placement. So, while the cost, the lines went up, it doesn't reflect the fact that those other, the conversation from the last meeting, which was not about out-of-district placements, but was about the positions needed in our classrooms in district, and the two are two separate issues, and we should be careful not to mix them up.
We did, we, hold on, we didn't mix them up. We didn't know what our numbers were gonna be when we put the budget together. And that was the request. That was the request was for those, for those amount of dollars that they needed to properly fund sped. So.
Specific positions.
I'm just telling you, that's what was reported at the time, when we were doing our budget in June. Remember, I requested the budget to be here June 1st. And the only reason that we were delayed in turning the budget into city council is not because of anybody else other than the school department. We delayed that. And then we had conversations at length about the sped. That's why there was another transfer made. That's why we made the transfer. We didn't know what those numbers were gonna be when we made that. We do now, certainly, but the, that wasn't the intent at the time, is to properly fund sped. And then we had talked about the circuit breaker. I specifically remembered that we didn't have any, we actually left it blank and didn't allocate any of the dollars from, from our circuit breaker towards anything in case we were out of compliance in sped. Let me just look at the B. Yeah, we made another $1.3 million transfer July 14th. And that was specifically for.
How much did you say?
Well, the total amount was 1.3 million.
Okay.
It wasn't all for sped, but some of it was for returning the, that was at $500,000 for extracurricular.
Right.
That was all part of that.
Right.
Right, so I think, so I completely understand what you're saying, Wendy, that the problem with, you know, this budget is there's $1,000,000 more going towards sped, which, you know, takes away from other lines, but very little of it we're able to put into the schools.
Right, and so that's still a need that needs to be addressed.
Right, there's still needs.
We didn't say, didn't, but at the time, we didn't know what those numbers were gonna be. You can't budget for something if you don't know what those lines are. And again, if another student comes in that's out of district or whatever, and we, we're not in compliance, then we're gonna have to allocate the funding necessary to meet that student's needs. And that's why we didn't place any restrictions on, on the circuit breaker.
Right, I just want it clear, though, that we have two different compliance issues that we're talking about. Out-of-district placements to meet needs and in-district placements needs. If this meets those out-of-district needs, great, all for it. But we still need to address the fact that we have issues in our buildings, and this does not address that. That's all I'm saying.
And so, I just noted that we put in an extra $800,000, over $800,000, because that was, I was only basing this on anticipating what, what was given to me for the budget.
All right.
So, I can't anticipate what might happen in three or six or nine months. I'm just saying.
But we were given both pictures.
Eight hundred thousand dollars. I just wanna make sure it's noted. That's all. Simple, nothing else other than that. Okay?
And hopefully, there'll be money in lines that we're able to transfer. You know, obviously, as the year goes on, it doesn't help us get people into the classroom quickly. So, the one thing, we went through our priority list that we were given. Up to number five, which I can share this with you. So, what we had left were special education, more special education positions, the parent information, person in the parent information center who's bilingual. But, you know, again, things have changed, because now we have, Dave's still here. Now, we have the electric position maybe higher priority than either of these two. And that's, I figured I'd let Paula wait, you know, give her more than a week and a half to determine what's your highest priority.
Right, and I think.
But that's on our, that's on our list.
Right, and so, I think we need to keep a running list of what the priorities are. And if they change, I think we just need to know that. We've gotten one, two, and three out of, out of the way that were one and two.
We did better than that, actually. We did one, two, three, four.
What was the fourth?
The band at Skyview.
Oh, yeah, okay. And we did the language at Skyview.
And we got the senior custodian back at Francis Drake and.
Some help at St. Masser. Okay.
So, the other thing, well, actually, why don't we vote on, why don't we do that, and then I'll talk about this. Any other questions about the line item?
No, so I'll make a motion to accept the 2018 line item budget as presented.
Second?
Okay.
No one can?
Any questions? I just wanted to add one thing. If we can make sure we get the percentages spent in each line item?
So, what we can give you is what the proposal is right now, what we're voting on.
Right.
Hopefully, in the next month, we'll be able to start making transfers, so those percentages are gonna start to change right away. So, as long as I know what, it's, I think, it's, in my opinion, it's better to wait a month to get the percents for, you know, the transfers we're doing, because it'll just be more accurate as to what's in our buildings right now.
Right, but if you show the transfer, if you show the percentage now, it'll make sense when we transfer a larger amount out.
So, we have the percentages done for now.
So, we're halfway through the year, and it's at 89%. We know that we're, we're, we don't need, we're probably not.
Oh, do you mean percent used?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that'll come on, that'll come on our munis spreadsheet automatically.
Do you have a projection of what the, what, what those percentages are gonna be?
Well, I'm gonna say.
I'm just asking.
Once, no, I know, I mean, I, I'm gonna say zero, the zero, there's gonna be a lot of zeros, hopefully not a lot of negatives. We'll be able to move the money around.
That's what we're reading, how many negatives we're gonna have.
Well, right now, we have a lot.
How many negatives is?
After we vote, I will tell you how many negatives we have.
After the vote?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's a double jeopardy.
It is. But we can't start transferring the money until we vote. So, it's just kinda the way the process works, unfortunately. I mean, we're relying on Glenn to have given us the best numbers he could at the time, and we have to go with what he knew, and then we can explain away why we're transferring the money.
Still a negative.
Some are, some aren't.
All right, let's call the.
All right, so there's a motion and a second? Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, signify in the usual manner. All right, we have our first line item budget.
All right.
Good job.
And thank you again. Let me just say, Glenn, thank you one more time. Thank you. So, what we have come up with that I'm not ready to share yet is, again, Glenn very kindly put this together. We go up to O, which is like 15, I think. Different things that we want to make sure that the community, that the city, that each other knows what we have done and what it's costing us. So, we, we hired two technology specialists, and some of this happened in the summer even before we knew what was going on, I'd say. But it affects the budget that Glenn put together. We got the two language specialists at the middle schools. We've got the senior custodian at Francis Drake. We hired 19 junior custodians back. The health insurance for the 23 custodians will be prorated. The bands position at Skyview. We are short in the athletic fund, what was funded right now, so I wanna make sure that's captured, so we know if there's a deficit. Same thing with the extracurricular. If we don't raise the amount of fees that we're going to. Additional funding for substitutes, because that line was definitely shorted when the budget was made.
Can we get a lot, can we get a, that's one of the areas that I think we need to keep a watch on and not in May? I think we need to get a month-by-month.
Definitely.
Expenditure. What, what do we appropriate in that budget?
For substitutes?
Substitutes.
$4.25.
$4.25.
And we have not spent less than $500 in three years anyway.
What about year-to-date? What have you spent?
Let me switch sheets. Yep. I'm not gonna find it easily, Glenn. What number am I looking at?
On the substitute? Would be, short term, would be 23, 25.
Oh, I'm looking at the expenses, not the salaries, that would be why.
So.
Uh, 23, 25, yep, so.
Minus $82,000.
Yep. But what we have to remember is, I think the last, about $100,000 anyway, comes in June. That's when a lot of teachers take time, so.
We, we just need to know, any of these accounts, I think what we need to know, are we spending at a greater rate than?
We are definitely spending more on the substitutes than we normally do, there's no doubt.
We should red flag that.
And that's why it is on this list for sure. Because it may be more than the 100, that we're nor, the 100 that we know we need, it may be more than that.
And I think we need to, I don't know if it's possible to look at, you know, maybe where those substitutes are going? Like, you know, is it more at the high school or in the middle schools or at the grammar schools? And sort of what's sort of happening?
I think that.
To have a closer rein on those issues?
I think the superintendent's aware of where the excessive tardies have, tardies, absences have been. And she's working on that. So, the funding for the interim superintendent stipends possibly for our contracted people. That's something that we need to talk about. The interim at Fallbrook. The known underfunded transportation costs. I mean, we, we talked about that a lot in the spring, so you knew that was coming. And then what is O on this list is the CTEI electric person. It, that appears to be our number one person that we can hire back. There's money that we need to transfer out of the, like, what was Emerald Green custodian line to cover some of these costs, because, you know, it's sitting there and it won't be used. We should have money from unemployment to be able to apply, but these total about $1.9 million. The athletic fees should come in, the extracurricular fees should come in. So, hopefully, we'll be able to reduce this by hundreds of thousands, hopefully more than a million. But that's, that's what we're talking now.
Same deficit right now. If we continue with the rate of spending that we're at, we'll be a million, but with the transfers, it would be half a million.
No, a million point nine, two million.
Two million, half of that would be a million.
A million, right.
And the money.
And of the million, say, half of that is transportation, so. And we can pull it all out, you know, so everyone can see it, but just so, you know, people are aware, like, that's what we're talking about. So, when we say, you know, if we can find money for this or that, we have to find a lot of money for a lot of things.
The money that you said that we're not using, how much of that is equal to the electrician that we're, the, the teacher that we're, we're missing?
Well, they budgeted $45,000 prorated, because we're, you know, almost, not halfway through the year, but.
Is there money in that place that we're not using, that we could use that?
There's, there's not enough money for sure to cover $1.9 million. So, this would be a kind of a gamble on our part that we're gonna find it in unemployment or somewhere else.
I guess basically, I wanna know, how soon can we get that money to get that teacher back?
By December 11th, we're gonna have a, a, a meeting that will have better numbers for how much our unemployment has dropped and what we feel we can transfer out of the contracted custodial services opposed to the salary line.
And is that, how much is that going to impact? And I don't mean to take up all the time, ask you any questions.
We don't know.
But how much is that gonna impact?
And I, I leave that really to the superintendent and to the finance manager to discuss.
But does she have to come back and ask us, or she, can she just do it so that way they get rid of this, to solve this particular?
Yeah, we need to know those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to know where the money's coming from. The problem is we don't have the money to do it without knowing how much we're getting back.
But she said the money is not being used.
Well, the school choice or the added district school choice.
But we've already committed some funding for the cust, bringing the custodians back. And with, depending on the, the rate of spending in terms of unemployment insurance. So, we've already sort of committed that, so that, that pool of funding is probably out. What she's saying is they need to sort of process that another step further and to be able to more accurately supplies with information as to where that money might come from. and to be able to more accurately supplies with information as to where that money might come from. So, if you fund that, it's got to be a, you know, it has to be a permanent funding source because that's a salary, and you want to make sure you have enough money to hire that person back next year.
And we have the issue of not only the electrical teacher, which is very worthy, but also if we have deficits in the special ed teaching staff, which is also very worthy. And we're going to need to make a decision about, you know, what do we need to fund first? What is our top priority?
And, and I still want to, you know, we're all saying different things. I mean, guidance is drowning. I have to plug them because they're trying to get seniors applying to college. And that's, for a lot of kids, this is the culmination of all their hard work. So, without getting transcripts loaded and referrals sent.
All right, so we've got some work to do. You're going to continue on your process. Superintendent will work, and we have to prioritize. That's what we didn't do in the past, and that's what's got us in trouble, is we said yes to everything, and then we didn't have enough money to pay for it. We said yes to, you know, for, well.
So, we'll be able to.
A lot of things.
So, we'll be able to have a better handle on this.
Yes.
And I didn't want to show, I didn't want to give this to people and especially City Hall and show a deficit without showing, you know, how much work that they've done to find the money to cover a lot of this. Because it's not, we're not sitting there with a two-million-dollar deficit.
I, hold on.
We're not.
And, and I agree. I mean, in terms of the training that students need, I mean, that's, I mean, that's paramount, I mean, for them to get the experience. I would like to know, and I'll certainly check my resources, just to get an idea of what other schools do. I mean, you know, what's the ratio of teacher? How do they run their programs? How much, what is their budget? You know, somebody referred to Monty Tech today, and maybe Worcester. Their trade and technology schools, they have a couple of different ones. And I'd be curious as to how they fund, are they taking students into school choice?
I think, I mean, I think Monty Tech's pretty full with their own. They take a few, but not many. Glenn, can I ask you one question? Do you, does school choice with our, with our, you know, agreement go into the same school choice as everybody else? Or because it's an agreement, does that go into a separate fund or line or something? I mean, can we track that money that Sue brought up?
Yes, absolutely.
What's in the city?
It's a revolving fund. That money goes to the city, but it's credited to our revenue source.
But it goes into the general school choice fund? There's not a separate.
Should be for the CTEI.
The tuition ones.
We're going to establish a separate line.
Oh, you do have a separate one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, has that money been earmarked for other things during, at CTEI? Because clearly, that would be the best way to use the money, is it's being generated by CTEI, that it should be used for CTEI.
During the budget process, we include that as a general revenue. That was added to what we anticipated under net school spend. It was included as general revenue. We have not targeted that funds at this point in time.
So, when we look at the school choice funds on December eleventh, we'll know more then. And if you know more before then, certainly, let us know.
I just want to, again, the list that Kristen pointed out was the list, the running list that the finance committee has been discussing over the past few months. There is no prioritization of that list. It was when those topics came up.
Oh, the one through five, what do you mean?
The A, B, C, D. As they came up. It's no reflection that item O happens to be the issue that Nona brought up relative to the need for an electrical instructor. But I also remind you, there are issues that aren't on that list that will be coming up. With students enrolling, we've had, as you'll see here at some point if Virginia gives her presentation, we've had a hundred and fifty-two students enroll here as of, after October first.
And so, we're not going to get credit from the state?
Not going to get paid, yeah.
We don't get money this year, we don't get money next year. And we've seen about forty students depart since October first that we are getting money for. Because we're talking a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen students that we'll be educating this year and next with no revenue source.
How many of those numbers, how many of them from Puerto Rico or Texas?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty, from Puerto Rico?
So far.
What about Texas?
Nominal. It's a nominal amount.
And the other state, Florida, that got hit?
Probably not much.
More than five?
Most of them are coming from in-state. They're relocating from other municipalities in the Commonwealth. And they're coming here. The issue, we're not, we're not the scale of Holyoke and Lawrence and other places. But forty students that we don't get funding for, that's half a million dollars that other places are getting or not. We have a much larger influx of students after October first than outflow. That's a significant issue. But the point I wanted to make was, you know, with all these students enrolling, we are now bumping up to thirty students per class in some of the elementary schools. So, there may be a greater need to hire an elementary school teacher at one of the schools in order to accommodate this influx. So, there are other issues that will need to be discussed between now and when the finance committee has their formal meeting where they list all the potential transfers, all the potential revenue sources, and they will come to the full board to make a recommendation. This is all in large part based on bringing Superintendent Deacon up to speed on what the priorities are and what her recommendations will be to the board.
Do you feel like December eleventh is a realistic date for you, or at least preliminary?
We have no choice.
Yeah, we have no choice. We have to. We're there.
Yeah, no, the quicker the better. We've got to keep our eye on it. I mean.
I just want to make sure, we've got people who advocate very well for positions. And I, I would too, if I were them. I just want to make sure everyone has a chance, you know.
I mean, typically, school committees don't get involved in this.
I know, you're right, you're right, you're right.
That's why I was asking you, I mean.
We have really reached out here in the last few years. We'll get, we, if you remember, when we hired the last superintendent, one of the things I said to the superintendent is, you're a lucky person because none of us want to do your job. We don't want to be the superintendent. We want to be the school committee. Yet, what we've had to do is we keep sort of meddling our way into the job of the superintendent in the, in the finance department in the school. You know, we're here to listen to what your recommendations are and decide on what those, what those transfers or whatever they might be. I think Kristen has, you know, gone way above and beyond in her capacity as a finance chair to, for years now. And somehow or another, I think people assumed it was part of your job or something, but it's not. And, and we really need to, well, no, when you're comfortable making decisions and you have the information that you have, but we're not going to need the recommendations to come from you as to what the priorities are. We're sitting around deciding which of the priorities. But that's, that's way above what our jurisdiction should be. You know, highly functioning. I want to hear from you. If you think we're wrong, you should let us know. And as much as I want to tell everyone that, you know, we need to fund that electrical, which I a hundred percent agree, it's paramount, especially in the last, you know, as, as education goes, we're going to see less about education, more about training.
Exactly.
I don't care what field it is. And it is a perfect example. But if there are other things like guidance or whatever, then I need to hear from you. We need to hear. Okay. We are now going to move on to policy? There's nothing on policy?
Yes, yep, I definitely do. So, first, we had to make some clarifications on the extracurricular fee policy that we had previously passed. One being that the wording for the middle school exempt clubs inadvertently left out Skyview Band and Chorus. We're going to be, it's going to be worded clearly that it's, while Skyview is unable to fit it as part of their school day, so it is an after-school activity, it is an exempt. So, that it's clear, if in coming years it becomes both, then it's not exempt any longer. But for now, it's because Sammaset has it during the school day and Skyview does not. The other thing that's being clarified is the wording to make it clear that the exempt activities are, if that is the only activity a student is doing is on the exempt list, there isn't a fee. Because we have been trying to make it very clear that one, it, it, these are the only activities. If a student is doing the activities that are not on the exempt fee, then the fee per student per year kicks in. And we're going to clarify what a club needs to be viable because we have to make sure that we're paying stipends to teachers for clubs that are actually active. So, the committee with the help of Dr. Lord has come up with a formula. Because as it was explained to us, some clubs meet only a few times a year and are very large. Other clubs meet weekly throughout the entire school year but are on the smaller side. So, we're going to use an equitable formula of pupil hours, which is the number of times they meet times the number of students. And for a club to be viable, we need a hundred and fifty pupil hours by May thirty-first for the school year. So, clubs that meet three or four times a year that have seventy students, like the.
National Honor Society.
National Honor Society. And an example was given of a knitting club that has six students but meets weekly. By the end of the year, they've put in the same amount of hours. So, we're going to use hours as opposed to the number of physical students in a club. So, that was just to fix our extracurricular policy. However, we do have a new policy, very short, sweet, to the point.
Before you get there, I just want to reiterate that with the user fee policy, that if anybody is having difficulty paying that user fee.
That was on my list.
That they should seek out Loreen, who is the athletic director. All the user fees are going through her because we do have accommodations for families who are experiencing a specific need.
Yep.
And there is a reduced rate for students receiving free and reduced lunch in any case. But sometimes fees can be waived with specific circumstances.
That was on my list for a little further down. But I just, so to finish that point, also, if, she will also arrange if you need, if you're paying the fee but need time to pay it out and can't pay it all at once, that's an accommodation also that can be discussed. The other piece we had was, we're going to be incorporating both into policy and into the handbook, which falls under policy, virtual learning. So, the first step is being presented tonight for a first reading. Just a very broad policy that we're saying, Lemonsir Public Schools supports virtual education, which could include various platforms and academic offerings. So, that's presented tonight for a first reading. And then we're going to be reviewing rental of facilities, including custodial costs, and reviewing our committee protocols, polishing them, and then reintroducing them in time to start the new year in January and make that part of the process for our new incoming members.
Okay. Do we need to?
We need to, we need to.
Yes, we need to. Yeah, we need to approve that first reading for the virtual education.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Nice job? Anything else from policy?
Nope, that's.
Do parents get an email with a bill for the curricular? Do you know the procedure?
So, no, actually, that was something, they, there was, they were supposed to, we had already had, thought this was settled. When we set the policy, it was supposed to go in effect for November one. Some parents got notified of fees and some didn't. So, we need to reach out to building principals and make sure that it's consistent across buildings. Some, some people got theirs and are okay. Others got them late and aren't clear on when they're due. Some were first-quarter clubs that don't meet anymore, and now they're getting billed for a club that finished. So, it is inconsistent across buildings. So, we do need to make sure that's being handled consistently.
Chris did assure us that at the high school level, all the clubs, the teachers who are running the clubs are to submit an attendance for every single session so we can track that. It's not like a club that, you know, one kid went once and then nobody else ever, you know, attempted to make it viable.
But then when they, list is submitted, will they get, like, the parent, like, I want to make sure that parents know they have to pay the fee before they're deemed delinquent.
Right.
So, one of those parents who just never knows.
Right, so we need to, we didn't address that issue, so that we'll need to follow up.
It's going to be a credit card, we'll take it, a lot of matter.
But we are tracking, they are tracking to make sure that they're viable and people are actually showing up and going and.
What's being tracked for us, at least at the high school level? And we'll have to make sure at the middle school level, too. We haven't had the middle school here. But they're tracking numbers, but also by students, so we can see how many students are crossing clubs. And so, we're supposed to be getting a very detailed list of how clubs are being used.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
All right. We'll move on to action items. Do we need to vote on FLYC representative?
And so, that one is always the superintendent? So, I vote that Paula.
Yes.
They were nominating you.
Is the representative?
Yes, all set.
Okay.
That's wonderful.
There you go.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Those opposed? And vote on the FY eighteen general fund salaries and expenses? We've done. New role business?
I do, I have.
Yes.
Yeah. First, I want to say that I thought long and hard about this. And I've written a statement. It's apparent that in the past few months that we, the school committee, in particular the finance committee, has repeatedly had to answer the same questions. The accusation of a five-million-dollar deficit has been answered several times, and as of November fifteenth, it was questioned once again. Once again, that five million was three point nine million in positional cuts that would have been necessary if we had not received additional funding and the one point one million in unemployment that needed to be paid, and that would be for this current school year that we're in. Also, a statement made by the chair that certain members of the finance committee repeatedly warned the school committee of the lack of integrity in the budget process and that a crisis was looming. Let me make it clear, we were all aware that this year had reached a crisis point. In fact, the budget presented in May of two thousand sixteen by the superintendent stated that there was a one point seven million deficit. Many times, at several finance and regular school committee meetings going back several years, we were led to believe that money was there to cover the cost of these deficits, such as transportation. And a footnote, transportation is not part of net school spending. And in many community, communities, including Fitchburg, the city pays for transportation completely. I question why committee members who thought there were problems agreed to vote on a budget that was four percent more than net school spending, that would see fewer layoffs when they knew the mayor was only going to give us a net school spending budget, forcing more layoffs. I have served on the finance committee for the past two years and attended finance meetings for an entire year before that. My conclusion is that the finance committee is not functioning as it should. Therefore, it is my recommendation, and I'm putting forth a motion, to dissolve the finance committee and make it a committee of the whole. This means that the entire school committee would act as the finance committee. They can and should have a separate chair that would put together the agendas and lead the financial part of committee meetings. Many communities operate this way, which, to name a few, include the communities of Peabody, Cambridge, Hingham, Andover, Newton, Ashland, Rockport, Millis, and Marlboro. I believe that we, if we pass this motion, we will become more transparent to the community, whether they attend our meetings or watch us on TV. They will be able to truly understand our budget and finance process, which is one of the issues the public has been asking for this year. Mr. Mayor, I urge you to stop the continued attack on us. It is your responsibility to support us, guide us, and do what is best for the children of this community. You passed a net school spending budget, and we had to make tough decisions to lay people off and cut programs. Then miraculously, after an outpouring of public protest, you came up with more money to give us to bring some employees back and to help with athletics and extracurricular activities. That money was eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for health insurance, one point three million for athletics and extracurricular activities, and staff being rehired, and fifty-five thousand dollars for transportation. I felt we were like Charles Dickinson's Oliver, asking for more porridge, please. I am here as a member of the school committee to support our schools, the staff that work for us, and especially the students, to do the best I can to ensure that we rebuild our system to be the great one that I know it can be. I hope that all of you will support my motion to dissolve the finance committee and make this a more functional process.
Yeah, no, I think.
I'll second that.
I think you missed a couple of things. One is net school spending was half a million dollars.
I'll second the motion.
And, and then, that's one point, then we, and the first budget was one point two. And if you're, hold on, I'll listen to you, okay? And what I said from the very beginning, I said, I never said that that's all we were going to get. I said we needed to, we needed to move towards a baseline. Every single time I said a baseline. Brought the information with me tonight. A baseline of net school spending, and then we're going to add to that. But we needed to get a budget in. And what I was worried about, remember this? I was worried that we weren't going to get our budget in for June first. Kristen, nobody from the school department came to see me. Kristen had to come to see me, a school committee member, tell me we're one point seven million dollars in deficit.
She's the chair of finance.
What point? She's not the, she's not the superintendent of schools or the finance director. She's a member of the school committee. This has never happened to us people. It's a superintendent's job. And, and, and I said, the first thing I said is, everybody that was in the auditorium, I said, we'll get through this, but everybody has to work together to get through this. And, and, and we hadn't even dealt with a one point seven million dollar deficit yet.
And here's a way we can all, we can all work together.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
By we all being as a committee of a whole.
I'm just trying, I'm not disagreeing with you. Don't take it that way, because I'm not. not. What I'm saying is, the first budget that came through was 1.2 million. That's over double, almost triple, of what the net required net school spending number was. Just as a baseline, we started with 1.2 in the budget. And then we added to it, but I told you at the time, you know, we need to understand the 1.7 first before we can do anything. So just make, just so you understand that, that's all. And in terms of committee, that's up to, the chair designates committees. Whoever the chair is here in January, okay, it's not going to be me, I can tell you that. But whoever the chair is, the chair can decide what committees get established. That is, that has been our, we read this, that our protocols decide what we do. You want to change the protocol, then you got to change, you know, for 24 years, no, longer, the chair decides what committees are, and who's going to be on those committees.
And I, and I was.
So if that's your recommendation, I'm fine with that, that's fine.
And so then it would be Kristen, and then Wendy, and then Ron.
So I just think there's so much confusion out there, and, you know, Nona, I guess I take a lot of what you say personally, as I didn't do a good job, because that's the way it comes off. And that's okay, I mean, you're entitled to your opinion, but.
I'm not, I'm not saying you didn't do a good job. I'm tired of reading in the paper that only two members knew that there was going to be a deficit, warned us, and when we all knew it, when we all knew it. And the best way to solve it is by having all of us be responsible for the, for the finances.
And I'm not disagreeing, and I'm not, but that's not what you just said, I mean, I didn't write the article, I had nothing to do with the article. That's not what you just said. And again, you're entitled to your opinion, and it was a mess. What I can't reiterate enough is, there's two things going on here. There's voting for a budget that we all, you know, I'd vote for a budget that's $30 million more than what we voted for, if I thought it was realistic. The problem that we had, year after year after year, this was our third year, we couldn't get reports that accurately showed what we were spending, where it was going, you know, they forgot, until Glenn got here, and again, I can't praise Glenn enough for getting everything straight, and it took him six months to figure out where those deficits were, until March, you know, we're three quarters of a way done a year before we even know how much money we're spending. And you can't slow down a wheel that's going that fast, right? We just drove ourselves into a problem. You can't, in my opinion, advocate for more money if you can't show where you're spending the money that you have is. And that was this committee's problem, and that wasn't our fault. That was an administration unable to provide documents, you know, right, in example, two years into it, we forgot lane changes. Oh, we need to throw $200,000 onto salaries for lane changes. You know, we have nothing to do with that. You know, we're supposed to approve a budget and, you know, have the superintendent give us something that looks like, you know, we can understand it and those types of things. We couldn't get that. That was the problem that I was trying to fix. That's a totally separate problem then, advocating for more money from the city, from the state, from the federal government, that's just a separate thing. And I think those two things kept getting confused, and that's how we wound up where we are. I mean, that's what it comes down to. We rolled bad numbers into bad numbers into bad numbers, and without a handle on where we were spending our money. And I welcome the whole committee to come to finance. I just think a lot of people don't want to hear the tedium, and it'll take a lot longer, and I'm not on the committee anyway, so it's not my thing, but I, whoever's chairing it, I think it'll, that changes the dynamic of it, that's all.
Wendy?
Okay, so first I just want to say that I take a little exception to some of what this is. The problem is, year after year, is net school are a tiny percent over it, and it, that is what the problem is, passing that over you. The bigger thing is, though, Nona makes her statement, and then numbers get thrown around. We passed a budget, the eight of us that showed up for the two meetings, eight to nothing. Further back than that, we were told that we must pass a net school spending budget. We had a joint meeting with city council at the library during this budget process, where I, I was just one of many who, who ended leaving a meeting feeling extremely bullied because I was yelled at and told, yes, we could be told how we could, should vote. And then we voted and did something, you know, we knew it was going to be a fight, and we passed something over, but I just, the reason I think Nona is making this motion is because there isn't enough getting done where people feel like they're part of it or understand it, and she's right, there's not, you know, there's all this talk about transparency, this is a way to do that. But we have a problem where we're passing policies and putting rules into effect, trying to teach our children not to be bullied, and we're sitting here, and I've watched public, members of the public, members of this committee, and members of our staff be bullied from people sitting at this table, and that is the problem that we have, not Nona's motion. Thank you.
Wendy, do you bear any responsibility to the fact that the state is saying you're required a mile? Now, that's a base, that's, that's, you know, this is what you need to run your school system. They don't tell you how to spend your money, but what they say is, you needed last year 500,000, which was low, we all agreed on that, $500,000 to run your school system. And your budget came in at 5 million? I have to explain, you might not run into those people, but I feel I need to explain to the people that come to me across from the tax office, and after paying their tax bill, and say, how could you be cutting when you spent 4.8 million? And, and we're not even done yet, we're probably going to spend another million before the end of the year, so we're talking about 5.8 million dollars, and you're cutting? Fitchburg's got, I mean, just over net school spending, and they're buying computers for every kid in the school system, they laid off a few people? People read the same newspaper, and they're wondering why. And we have, we, we, as a school committee, spend money, regardless if it comes from the federal government, the state, donations, or whatever, we have a fiduciary responsibility by law. And people are asking this question, how could we, how could we get in ourselves in this position, where the required amount is, is half a million dollars, and we're going to be at 5.8 million dollars? And, and we had to cut a teacher from, from teachers and guidance counselors? People want an explanation. So just because we vote on something, doesn't mean the money's going to be there, and I'm anti-education, or anybody on this committee is anti-education because they can't give you the money. That's, that's, I think, one thing that you got to understand.
No, and so to answer your.
And I said the baseline was, just so we have a budget, because the year before we did the same thing. I couldn't turn in my budget, the year before I couldn't turn in my budget, got to wait for the school department budget. Then I got to throw in my face that I turned in a budget late purposely to the city council. I was ready to turn my budget in March.
Okay, wait, hold on a second. So to answer your question, yes, I own every vote that I make sitting here, so yes, I own the fact that I voted to pass a budget that was 4% over net school spending this year. But I, since you mentioned last year, I also own the fact that a motion by Heather and a second by me was made last year to pass a budget that the chair did not let us vote on, and that was why there was no budget last year. So I own every.
Not just the budget, limited by the superintendent.
I owe, we did not pass a budget, is what I'm saying, last year. And I own that vote too, and every vote I pass sitting here, whether it turns out to be the right or the wrong, I never, ever try to distance myself from a vote that I that I made.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, the, the, it might be 4%, I don't know what your calculator says, but every day I have, and today included, I have to answer the same question. How could you be getting this kind of money and making cuts? That, that, let me tell you, I sat, I sat here, we sat here, some of us, for 24 years straight. We were listed as the model, model school committee. We've not, we've had worse crises than this, and we've always been able to resolve them. People want an answer. They've, for 24 years, they've, we managed.
People are tired of appeasement, and that's all.
So it's Ron's turn?
I feel like I'm watching a pot of Cool Hand Luke, with the sheriff with the baseball bat in his hand, saying, well, we're here to tell the communicating. I know I was at the finance meeting. Wendy? Nona? Chris? And Sue? The four of us, we said, three years ago, look it up, we don't have the money. And we were told, oh no, Ronnie, oh no, the money's there. Am I right or am I wrong, Cody?
We weren't.
Am I right? We were there.
They're not backing you on the product.
I was not here three or four years ago, I don't own that.
Okay, who was there at that table? Who was at that table when we told them we didn't have the monies? And they kept on telling us net school spending was going to, was going to be sufficient. I know I was there.
Could be people who aren't here anymore.
And we tried.
I have to just reiterate one more time, I really have a hard time understanding, there's two separate issues going on here. There's advocating for money for our schools that we desperately need. And let me just also reiterate that we, as a school department, underfunded ourselves by not reporting our students accurately. That's on, not on the city, that's on, I won't say us, but that's on administration.
Administration, that's part of the.
So, so we did need more than $500,000 more to run because we had needier students than were reported. So there's, there's an immediate problem right there. No matter how much money we need, or how much money we get, we still have to know how we're spending our money, and for almost three years running, we couldn't report that. Two separate and distinct issues, needing more funding and knowing how we're spending our money, and they keep getting crossed, and, and we just can't do that. You, we just, you just can't.
Why did you vote for the budget then, if you knew that that wasn't it?
I would have voted for a budget for $30 million more, but I needed administration, I needed an administration. No, I mean, I don't think voting for a budget that reflects what students need, whether we're going to get the money or not, has anything to do with making sure the administration is spending the money appropriately.
In 2014.
And as of July 1st, we need to make sure that, that our system can run. And other administrations have been able to say, you know, we need $3 million more, you know, and then they'll show you, if we don't get it, what they'll peel back in order to run the district July 1.
In 2014, we had six, in the 2014 audit, just the basic 2014 audit, we had 6.2 million dollars worth of mistakes in the school department, in report, overstated, understated, page, eight pages. Again.
I just want to say, it's not that I'm not for spending more on, I mean, I, I have three kids in the system. Needing and wanting more money is one thing that I will advocate for forever. Making sure that we're spending our money the way we should be and reporting it accurately is what I took my job to be, and.
And we do need to report accurately so that we get the sufficient funds, and everything is based on those numbers. So that is key for every single year. Let me, please, because you had a chance. And I do think that we need to know where we're spending our money, because maybe there's places where we could recoup money. Maybe there's things that we're spending it on that really don't make any sense, or maybe we're paying for two different licenses for the same thing, or, you know, whatever it is. You know, there may be ways for us to recoup some of that money. So we do need to know. You know, I think that the mayor is asking for an audit. Ideally, it would have been nice for him to have that conversation with the school committee as a whole before, you know, it was sort of put out there. You had mentioned it previously, but it had been like fallen by the wayside for, you know, like six months or so. It was, seemed like a really long time ago. So that would have been helpful, but I think that in the end, an audit is going to benefit us so that we know where our money is being spent, and we can make better financial decisions. You know, I commend not only Kristen, but every member of the finance committee. You guys spent a zillion hours, zillion hours this past year, trying to get a handle, and this is the first time we've really had a handle on, first time we've ever had a line item budget. I mean, so major, major progress has been made. Certainly, could we use more money? Absolutely. Certainly, am I worried that we have a list of going up to O, and that's probably not the end of it, that we're going to need to find money for, that, I don't know how we're going to find money for, because certainly unemployment and, you know, all those kinds of things are not going to recoup all that. So I'm worried, and we do need more money. You know, just paying for our transportation alone. Heather, you did a wonderful job on the transportation committee and made some changes, but it's certainly impacted us a lot, but not a huge amount. Do you know what I mean? I mean, the bottom line is, we need to transport a lot of children to get them to school, and we have a lot of area to cover. And you recoup some, but certainly we still have a lot of money going towards transportation. You know, is it helpful if the city just pays all that? You know, there's lots of different ways we can formulate it, but I want to make sure that we all need to work together and understand what we're working towards. So we do need to understand where the money's going so we can make good decisions about how to spend it, and all of us need to advocate for more money, because it's not enough. So that's kind of my point.
If, just one point, Nona, you remember this, when we were talking contract negotiations, and the teachers were picketing and upset, and we all agreed we want to fund the teachers, they're our main source here, they're, they're, they're blue for this place. We knew at the time, we knew the consequences, we knew this year, that there would be cuts.
In hindsight, we should have started.
We got, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, we knew.
We should have started laying off a few people every year.
We meant cuts.
What I don't like is to read things in the paper, or have a reporter call me, completely off guard, saying that this was coming out, and going, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, but this, audit's not anything new.
I understand that, and I think, had you brought it to us first, I think each and every one of us agree that a comprehensive audit is what we should be happening every time a superintendent's change is made, should happen every single time.
Yeah, just so you know, I mean, I was at the city, everybody here, including the city, the hall was filled, when I, my communication number, number one, said, number one, a complete, a comprehensive audit of the school department. I talked about these exact things that everybody's bringing up tonight. I brought up at that meeting, saying, how can we, we can't continue to move forward. Not to blame anybody, those were my words, we can't blame anybody here, we got to fix this, this has to be fixed. And the first step is a comprehensive, I said it then, I said it two other times since then, we need a real audit to explain to people how this happened, and we're going to go down the same path, we're a million dollars behind now, today, two, but hopefully one, and we have contract negotiations with how many unions this coming year? So nobody that's sitting at this table, or anybody that's elected, coming to serve here in the next year, can say they don't understand the dynamics of what's going on here. So you have to have the money to give, if you, if you settle a contract, right, you know this, Nona, we discussed this. If you agree to give $2 million worth of raises, steps, lanes, whatever, that's fine, that's, that's fair. But if you don't have the money to pay for that, it comes from cuts, just like LCE, right? What do we say? LCE, we all love the program, but, oh, we signed up for five years, where's the money coming from? Hey, it's a priority, we're going to take in kids from school choice, if not, where's it going to come from? Cuts, from other areas, right? We all knew that, everybody knew that. Susan, how many times did we ask that question? We all knew that. Then everybody acted surprised later when we had to make cuts, they're like, where's the money? I'm like, where's the money? We all knew this.
Well, that's why, that's why I think we should be acting as a whole.
I agree. I don't think, nobody's agreeing, disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, if everyone acted surprised when there wasn't money here.
And that's my motion.
Everyone's like, what happened? I'm like, what happened? You gave $2 million worth of increases and paid $800,000 worth of increases.
Sue, can we get you back? It's Cody's turn? He hasn't said anything.
Just circling back to the motion at hand, I think, first of all, I want to say, please don't let this feel like it's belittling any members of the finance committee, because we appreciate more than you can imagine the hours and effort that you all put into this. At the same time, I feel to some extent that there is a groundwork now where this could actually work. And I think that the public has demanded accountability, and maybe it's time that we bring the whole group in on the discussion. You know, ultimately, I don't think it's fair that the finance subcommittee has to sit there for six hours a night when the rest of us can, you know, be living our own lives. This should be a responsibility of the group, and I think it's a way that the group as a whole can be held accountable together. And I intend to support the motion.
Sue, do you need to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to defend my colleague, Kristen. I think she did an outstanding job for the past few years with finance. I mentored her for several years, and it's not an easy job. And I know Nona, and I know Heather, you both wanted to chair this year, your first year, you both wanted to chair that committee.
I didn't want a chair, I want to make it clear, I did not want a chair.
It's more money.
Kristen and I looked at both of you and said that if that's something you really want to aspire to, you really need to work with the current group.
Right, Nona, you said you would want it, but you were getting your knee done. You did say you wanted it.
At some, at some point, I didn't want it then, I was willing to support Heather. And have you mentored her and things?
Okay, but, but I, I just want to make it clear that I think, you know, she did an outstanding job, and I have.
I'm not doubting that.
I have said on several votes, I remember just this past year, we all voted on a retroactive increase for district capacity project, retroactive. And I kept saying, do we have the money? And everybody voted, I mean, check the voting record. You know, those, now, we could, we could blame the administration. We weren't given the information to make informed decisions. And I think that's what we're all struggling with is that we, sometimes we're not given the right information to make informed decisions. But you know what? Let's take the responsibility and, you know, rather than pointing fingers at, you know, bullying and, you know, finance subcommittee should be dissolved. I think that we should try to work better and more cohesively as a group. And I think that's where we fell short because I think that no one was really watching this shop. We're all busy with our own little agendas. And I think we've lost focus of the students. And I welcome you, Paula, for bringing in a kindergartner to do the pledge of allegiance. And that's what we need, we've been missing that, so.
I just want to make it very clear that I am not attacking either of you two on what you've done. I think you guys have done a great job. Kristen, you've done a good job leading the committee and things. It's when you read in the paper that mentions the two of you when all four of us on the finance committee knew what was happening, knew. And everybody else on this committee knew what was happening. That's what got me upset.
Right, but, but that's not a reflection of.
She didn't say anything.
All of us.
Then you threw them under the bus for the rest of us to be angry with.
No, not at all, not at all. And Kristen, I'll tell you, the greatest loss and I've seen in 24 years here in the school committee is that lady right there, I'll tell you. She's remarkable, it's the greatest loss this guy, and I'm not sure anybody could fill her seat or wants to. But we're lucky we had her because three kids, two jobs, a regular life to live, and she took on this? I, I tell you, I, in my 24 years, I've never seen anybody step up to the plate like that. And you can't pay somebody enough money. She was the, she was the void between when we didn't have good financial advice and when we did. Just remarkable.
And I think that.
More phone calls with her than I'd had with the.
More reason to make it part of the whole.
Right. And just logistically, so the chair decides, and I could care less, honestly. This is, elected or not, this is my last year as chair. And, and then you, you collectively can decide what you want to do. But the end of the day, the, the chair decides, and if you want to change that later, then we follow Robert's rules of parliamentary procedure, the chair decides on the committees. That's already been done, so maybe you want to take this up and change all the rules later on. But it's also not on the agenda. And if we're talking about transparency, it's not even on the agenda, right? For open meeting law, so that anybody wanted to come here to talk about it, whether they're former school committee members or anybody from the public, it's not even on the agenda.
It, it, excuse me, but it doesn't have to be. I, we spoke with Mass Association of School Committee and they said that we could bring it up under new or old business?
It's not old business.
It's new business.
No, no, but you can't, new business is new, but you can't just take something like this and put it on the agenda. You have the open meeting law. Nobody ma, if you, when did you write that?
I wrote this, this past week.
All right, then you, you had every available opportunity.
The past several months.
Available opportunity to put this on the agenda, right? And you could have called and said, can you add it to the agenda? That's what the purpose of the agenda is, so that you can put it on there so people can come and speak.
Are you doing your thing?
Pro and con, I mean, that's the open meeting law.
So we need to run, just if it's something new, but if it's not new, then we don't want to.
One regarding Nona. I looked, I've been reading everything on Listr and she's right. There's a lot of, three quarters of the cities in Mass, in Massachusetts, the finance committee is the whole board. Because they state, one, there's a lot of stuff to be absorbed. And two, they just have to have everybody on board because it's, 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 as you were saying, a fiduciary responsibility. And the other thing is, the reason why Nona and the rest of us are a little bit concerned is because we were, we were made to look like a bunch of schmucks in that, in that article in the paper. And that's what I resent. And I know, you know, your freedom of speech, you can say whatever you want.
That's correct.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, the worm will turn. We knew what was going on.
Okay, and I'm happy to hear you say that because I think there are a number of people that I heard from in the last six months that put this all on me. If you remember, the chair of the school committee, you didn't put enough funding in, you didn't do any of this. This was all thrown at me wrong. And I wish you had said that a few months sooner. Thank you. I'm glad that's coming out tonight, that everybody knew that this was going to be a fiscal disaster.
It's why we passed a budget that was more because we knew we needed more.
And that's why we're asking for more money.
I don't know what process you, you, you learned over time, I would like to see it, where you get to put in any number you want and then somebody has, the taxpayers or the mayor or somebody has to finance those things. I've yet to see that process used anywhere in, in the state. I have never seen that process.
We've had people come and lay out.
And if you don't give it to us, you're a schmuck and you don't care about kids and you hate education.
Yeah, let's refocus, we have a motion and a second on the floor to.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Chris, can you just, just sort of, what is the actual motion? If you don't mind.
All the way back to you.
I'm sorry.
All the way back.
Is it just to, is it just a?
Nona made a motion to dissolve the finance subcommittee and.
Make it a committee of the whole.
Make it a committee of the whole.
Yeah. And it was seconded.
Yep, and there was a first and a second.
The next one.
So.
No, we can't.
No, I would recommend that it would start January 1st.
That's fine. And again, you'll have to change and adopt new rules because the rules that we adopted say.
Right, and, and I would also say that there's going to be a couple of new members on the committee. So do we take this up at our meeting, our inaugural meeting, when we do the organization? Because if we're not enforcing it for the last month, we have new members, they're the ones who should probably also be voting on it. So I would, I guess, request to table it until January at our inaugural meeting.
Are you going to be looking to be the chair of the finance committee next year? Okay, so.
Well, I mean, we're talking about dissolving it, so.
Yeah, okay.
No, but I.
But that doesn't mean that I'm not going to continue providing what I provide, whether it's appreciated or not.
I think, no, you know.
And you still need somebody to.
I would want you to, Sue, I really would want you to. You, you have history, you know that, I would want you to. But I think if you had heard me in, in this, I would recommend that a separate chair of finance be the one there to set the agenda, lead the meeting. It doesn't have to be the chair of the committee. Other, other communities have separate chairs for the finance portion of that meeting. And they would be formulating, getting the information and bringing it to the meeting and, and leading that part of the meeting.
So I, I would agree with Irene that a new committee's coming on board. And I, I personally think that it should be deferred, but that's my opinion.
But you made a motion and we got a second, let's take a vote. Those in favor of Nona's motion and, and I, I still question whether or not, I, I'm not going to vote for it unless somebody tells me this is not a violation of the open meeting law. I'm not going to listen to anybody that's here. I want to make sure it is.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that for me personally, that I don't necessarily agree with you, but I think it needs to, we're not doing it now, so it needs to encompass the new members.
I'd like to do it just to have it on record and then you guys can redo it.
Okay, those in favor? Those opposed?
And abstaining?
Abstaining.
You can't abstain, you're here.
I'm not, I'm not part of it, you know, it's not.
You have, you're here, you have to vote.
She can abstain.
Who would be making up rules? You can't abstain unless, unless you have a conflict. If you have a conflict, then you could abstain if not, you have to vote.
Five to four, thirty. Okay, well then I think.
Honestly, I think that it should start, I think everyone should be there December 11th at 6 o'clock. That's the next finance meeting. And I'm happy if anyone shared.
Oh, is that your name?
I voted against it, but it's, I still went down.
Okay. That's it? Okay, anything else?
So December 11th, December 11th, 6 o'clock is the next meeting then, for finance.
Under new or old business?
So I guess I'm a little confused because I was not the one.
You just said to me you had something that you wanted to do under new or old business.
No, no, oh, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to clarify, you got me totally confused. With the callback of the custodians, did they all come back? I, we didn't get a specific, and what we're doing and do we need any outsourcing or is it all taken care of? We didn't, we were supposed to have an update. Because they had until what, the 13th?
Nineteen junior custodians have returned to work as of last week, out of 27.
Out of 27?
Emerald Green had provided 24 full-time equivalents to cover the scope of work of the junior custodians. Since we don't have 24 junior custodians return, we need to supplement their services. Currently using a hybrid situation. Emerald Green's working during the day as porters. We have a senior custodian during the day. Most junior custodians work the second shift, 2:30 to, 2:00 to 10:30. And most of them, we have a couple for various accommodations work during the day. We have to make arrangements as of December 1st, what type of arrangement we're going to have, if any, with Emerald Green. There's a debate as to whether or not we have a legitimate contract with them. We have money in the budget for them to, the course of the year. We currently have a purchase order that's only approved to pay them to the end of November. And hopefully we can come to some agreement with Emerald Green over the next week or two as to what hybrid services they will provide after December 1st. But I feel uncomfortable being the one to try and negotiate that agreement with them when the mayor is claiming that we don't even have a contract with them.
The purchasing agent backed that up today, yesterday, and said, whatever. He sent me an email yesterday stating that we do not have a contract with, with them at all.
Well, I think it's important that rather than wait till this gets to the stage of litigation, that we have an opportunity to meet with yourself.
Yeah, we should definitely work this out.
To meet with the purchasing agent, the interim superintendent, have an opportunity to talk. This shouldn't wait until November 30th before we make a decision.
No, that's next week.
Plus they put in for another $300,000 and then 195 for supplies?
No, they didn't put in anything. That was the business office that put in the request to purchase, to continue to pay them after December 1st and to continue to buy supplies after December 1st. I think it's critical, I sent an email to try and set up a meeting this week to discuss this because if there are going to be attorneys involved and we're going to resolve this situation before it goes to court, I think that's the best case, try and work out an agreement with Emerald Green for supplemental services after December 1st.
I just want to make sure we have enough money to pay the custodians. And then if we can't fill those slots, then that has to be done. That's sort of a union thing, it has to be worked out. Correct?
We had agreed not to hire anybody new that we were just asking for the employees to return, the custodial staff, who already were previously employed by us.
That was part of the mediation agreement, that they would supplement the returning junior custodians with outsourced staff.
Okay.
Right.
And that's what we're doing right now.
I just don't want to be brought into this. I mean, this is, this is superintendent and purchasing agent and if you need the, the city solicitor or the, if the purchasing agent needs a city solicitor, that's fine, for a referral or to Greg Angelini, one or the other. And I think that's typically the way that it would handle because it didn't require the mayor's signature on this contract at all. That's why I hadn't gotten involved. I did get involved as a school committee member because I was worried about litigation and what that complaint meant to us and my experience in the past, kind of reading between the lines, that that wasn't good. And that might actually cost us more down the road than less.
Truth.
So I'm trying to keep my hats in the properly.
So just again, to remind folks that the purpose of outsourcing the junior custodial work was to save money, to maintain teachers. That was, that was the reason it was done.
Absolutely.
The anticipation was it would save 150 to 200,000 dollars this year and at least double that next year when we're no longer paying for unemployment. Bringing them back has a cost. This was discussed at your meeting up at Skyview. There's a cost involved in that. We now know the cost, I did a calculation, it's on Kristen's sheet. It's going to cost almost $600,000 between now and the end of the year to provide the staffing with the junior custodians and to provide health insurance. That can be offset by negotiated savings with the contracted service company. But it's clearly not going to be that amount of money because there isn't that amount already left on the account. So that's something you have to discuss, as Kristen mentioned, that we need to consider a supplemental appropriation to cover that if it cannot be covered by savings in areas such as unemployment compensation. So it's a critical issue that we need to discuss. And again, using mayor's term, we can't keep kicking this can down the road.
We can't see it anymore.
We need to address it head on. And if in fact Emerald Green has asked not, if we don't want to approve a purchase order as of December 1st, what do we do with the staffing? We don't run enough staff at the schools.
But again, we were not probably going to win that, that complaint. I mean, the complaint was issued and.
We got the junior custodians.
Go back and have to pay back wages when this finally gets its final hearing in another year and have to pay the difference between unemployment insurance and retroactive is pretty substantial. And then hire them back when you already signed a contract between the company was probably going to be into the millions. So it's a risk management, so to speak, right?
That was made clear when the committee voted to bring them back.
At least that's how I felt. I think we got the majority of the committee to vote for that.
Is there another question or does that suffice?
Enough information, thank you.
Yes.
So tonight I'd like to make a motion to censure the chair of the school committee.
I'll second that. Hold a second. I, I beat you to it, sorry.
And Sue.
So first I want to say that I absolutely 100% agree with the audit. What I think should happen is that it shouldn't be your auditor. I think it should be an outside auditor, maybe Masbo, that is looking for these comprehensive, this comprehensive audit. You know, we've repeatedly asked you not to disparage us on social media and through the newspaper. And although you wrote this letter to, which you, you know, you did tell us about, that you were going to do. Yep, I got you. You know, in your, in your own way, you do throw us under the bus. No, you did. And in articles that you speak in the newspaper, you throw us under the bus. So on one hand, you're, you know, you're saying, you know, Lemester Strong, let's walk together. You know, we need to be working collaboratively. But then you do these things, you, this, these types of newspaper articles and, and things that we don't know about and it just divides us more and it makes us feel like a fractured committee.
Well, we're not a fractured committee.
We are.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, you're the leader.
I'm the leader, but I can't be responsible for everybody's actions like picking up, let's sanction the mayor. I mean, much more, I mean.
No, but you know what?
How much more you want to dump onto the mayor here? And how much more responsibility? I have responsibility to everybody. This is a big picture, this is an entire city, not just one department. There are 17, 18 different departments in the city. 17 met their budget every single year. This school committee met its budget every single year except for two. And we got along just fine here. For 22 years, we got along just fine.
But the problem hasn't just been the past two years.
Excuse me, excuse me. 22 years, we got along fine here, fine, never had a problem. We all left here, we had Christmas events, we sent each other cards, we left here as friends. In the last two years, that stopped happening. So you tell me what happened.
You stopped getting your way.
Yeah, no, that wasn't the case at all.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't the case at all. So go on.
No, there's a vote and there's a second.
I, I'd like to say something. Look, I think there's a lot of people in the community who are going to be confused and are going to ask themselves, isn't this just going to divide us further? So I want to make explicitly clear, you know, why we're doing this. You know, our school committee protocol states, and I quote, "The chair shall be the public spokesperson for the committee, except as these responsibilities are specifically designated to others." Furthermore, our protocol states that we recognize the importance of proactive communication and above all, it says we will respect our fellow members. I feel like we get two different chairs with you, Mr. Mayor, I really do. We had the one tonight who talks about moving forward together. And then we get the one who goes to the public, to the paper, to the media, to social media. And I've got, here, let me, just let me use your own words, shall we? In September, I'm sorry, on June 16th, published in the Sentinel and Enterprise, "In response to the committee's communication with the public in regards to the budget, the mayor stated," I quote, "I'm the only one on social media who went on to answer questions," he said. "Everyone else ran for cover." In the same article, he went on to call us, quote, irresponsible, unquote. Once again, referring to the school committee budget, on June 14th, once again in the Sentinel and Enterprise, "The school committee budget, the mayor stated, 'I've been through them all. No one has turned in a budget that was this irresponsible and this far off. It's poor fiscal accountability and that's what got them into this mess.'" It's poor fiscal accountability, and that's what got them into this mess.'" And again, I quote, "You said, 'I'm proud that I could put together a plan this summer to bail the schools out. Clearly, they got themselves into trouble, and we're going to fix that, there's no question.'" Yet again, the chair was arguing with the administration when he stated, and I quote, "I don't know where they're getting this stuff," when referring to numbers that the administration put forward. Let's keep going. Finally, the most recent comments by the mayor in regards to this committee, in which he stated half of the elected officials don't even know, or try to explain to the taxpayers of residents why we're the only school system in the state that appropriated 4.8 million, and there had to be layoffs, unconscionable. Does this represent us as a group? This is our job to bring it to the attention of another member when they are breaking protocol, and we have tried to do that time after time, and it just falls on deaf ears. We need someone who's going to bring us together, especially after this horrible crisis of the last year. And quite frankly, with due respect, sir, I think you've done a lot of good for the city, but you're not bringing this committee together.
Cody, you just said it yourself, I think you answered your own question. You referred to the position as what? Mayor, correct? We wear two hats, one is mayor, and one is the chair of the school committee, correct?
Correct.
You just answered your own question.
So, if I may, so that means that to the media, you're the mayor, but when you sit here, you're the chairman?
No, no, if you look.
Because you are supposed to be representing us per our protocol.
If you look in the, read the charter, you just read everything else, if you read the charter, it's the constitution of the city, they specifically state why they want the mayor on the school committee. Did you read that document?
I agree, I have.
No, no, no.
No, I have read the charter, yes.
Then tell us what it says.
It says that the school, the mayor should be the chairman of the school committee.
It doesn't say chairman, no, it doesn't say that.
Excuse me, it said the mayor has a seat on the school committee.
That's correct.
Because obviously, the education budget is the biggest piece of the city budget. That makes complete sense, and I'm not trying to take away your seat.
Read further into what the purpose was. The purpose was because they wanted the mayor, they wanted the mayor to bring to the attention the fiscal conditions of the city. And I tried to do that on a number of occasions, so has Sue, and so was Kristin. We tried to bring you, we've tried.
And here we go again, you're dividing.
I'm telling you, based on our experience, we've tried to bring you the, the whole picture of what's going on in the city, right? And I, and I have to do that both as, as mayor and, and chair of the school committee.
And I understand that, and I don't think it's your fault, but I think it's an inherent conflict of interest.
Okay, you can think what you want, but I'm just telling you, you asked me why, and I'm just telling you. I'm saying, if you have mayor, you have mayor, and then you have your chair, that's why I won't, if I'm elected again, I won't, I won't be the chair of the school committee.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Wendy? So if, if, if you have seen it as the conflict that it is, you've been mayor of Lemmister for 24 years, so you've sat on this school committee for 24 years, I believe you've been chair for 23 of those years.
And we never won $5 million.
Did you just now?
We never won $5 million.
I'm sorry, you, you, you tell people when they interrupt.
Let Wendy finish, please.
So now I'm going to ask you to let me finish.
Yeah.
It took you 24 years to realize that you couldn't do both, so you weren't going to try to be chair anymore? I, I don't quite understand that, except to say that this is the first time in the last two years that there's been all of this pushback. I think what the point that is being missed is not that the charter doesn't allow you your seat, it absolutely does. To change that would require a charter change, and that's a different process that isn't done in this room. But I have sat here, both on this side and that side of the table, for the last almost three and a half years now, and I have, I said it before under a different context, but it's just as relevant here. I have watched you mistreat and bully Cody, myself, Heather, Mrs. Budd, Mrs. Bible, and other members of the public, and it is, and then throw us under the bus on social media, and you sit on this committee, you are as responsible as we are, you are as responsible as the last 24 years of school committee members for everything that happens in this room, and you don't get to put on your mayor hat and say it's not my responsibility, when it is your responsibility. And this is not because you haven't been here, it's because when you've been here, it feels like if you're not appeased, then everybody needs to watch what they're doing because there is no, you know, there's no hiding from the anger that comes, and you have not been able to separate yourself.
And I do agree to some level of frustration, Wendy, because for 22 years, we built, we, our borrowing rating fell twice. We actually had to go to the emergency reserve board in Boston to beg, to borrow, so that we could borrow to build San Jose School. When the city had a $1.5 million, school department had a $1.5 million deferral teacher salary, negative free cash of $500,000, and we still move forward to build San Jose School, we didn't raise people's taxes, we did it in 10 years. As soon as we were finished, as soon as we were finished, we went on to take on another project. We did, we did Skyview. We did Skyview, we did it in 10 years, again, paid it off in 10 years, we saved $2.3 million. The state cut us $9 million after 2008, when we went into the recession. When we did the high school project, they only approved us for $14 million. Superintendent Binkley and I both went to the state, had to make our case to get it to a 40, $42 million project. 42 wasn't enough, we went up above $5 million, so the city funded the other $5 million. Again, that's going to be paid off in 10 years. We did all that, and you want to talk about cohesiveness and working together? And we did it. And we had larger obstacles to face than this, but you know what? We worked together, and we got it done. Now, we go from that, that situation, where we're not even building anything at this point, nothing, to a five, it's going to be six, probably $6.5 million by the time we're through, we're going to, of a deficit. You're right, there is something wrong, and I'm frustrated, and I apologize if you take it personally, but I've never seen anything like this. I work with other school committees across the state, I work with, with the state in terms of the DOR, I work with other mayors across the state, this hasn't happened anywhere. This has not happened anywhere, where the budget has been increased from $500,000 over the required amount to 4.8 million, we're going to need another million before the end of the year, and we're, and we're leaning people off. So if you're upset with me because of that, and because of my ability to speak as the mayor and my frustration, then I apologize, and, and, and I hope you don't, but this is big. But I can't sit across from somebody and explain, how did this happen? I'll ask for audits all day long, because they deserve an answer.
Like a DOR review? Let's do a DOR review.
Focus on something, talk about children, like, can we move on?
I don't think there's anything wrong. I don't think there was anything wrong with asking for an audit.
Just like you.
It came planned the second you talked to the.
All I'm saying is, I just, I appreciate the fact that an audit is a good idea. I don't, that, I haven't said anything about not auditing anything. I think a citywide, schoolwide, every, you know, every so often, I don't know how many years, but every so, it, both sides should be audited. That isn't what this, my statement was about. I don't discount the fact that we have buildings that weren't there before and are there now. I don't discount the work that goes into doing that. My point was that in this capacity, sitting here, is the, is the disrespect among how we're treated and how I've seen the public treated, that's all. I don't discount the good works at all.
All right.
We have a motion on the table.
Does anybody else have any comments who hasn't spoken already before we call the question? All right, we have a motion.
Again, this is clearly orchestrated, these people came with a prepared situation.
We are members of your committee.